Alright, welcome everybody. We're gonna get started in a sec here. Just waiting for people to join up.
Do we need to have our cameras on?
Well, it's a Saturday. If you, if you want to, you're welcome to, but no, no requirement.
Okay.
Get attendance down here and we'll get started. By the way, I don't know if y'all saw the message, but it does look like we are going to have everybody back next week. So the test looks like it's gonna be a green light for Tuesday.
Are we gonna be A day or B day on Tuesday?
Tuesday will be a B day because Monday is a holiday. It's Martin Luther King holiday, so. Cause we had an A day Friday, so.
Alright.
So make sure you're all studied up. I'll put, I'll send an email out to make sure everybody knows. You know, there may be some last minute thing where a whole bunch of teachers are absent again and they have to change things. So you know, it could be up in the air still, but most likely. We're gonna be able to get that test knocked out, get it done. And I think I've got everybody who is on the list here. Okay. Alright, so I know that in the two classes, we kind of got a little off in terms of being synced up because. Oh, we got two more people. Get those down real quick. We were having some pretty awesome debates over current events and politics and whatnot in our, in our sixth period class. So that kind of ate into our time a little bit. So we're a little out of sync. So for those of you who are fourth block, I do apologize for having to go back over some stuff that you've already got notes on. But we'll try to make it quick. There's somebody else. Okay, alright, well. We were in the midst of the Grant administration and the various. Scandals that were rocking that administration. And I think this is like, we left off. Just as the bell was ringing. In sixth block with the whiskey ring scandal where you had a large number of government. Employees who. Rather brazenly decided to just steal the entire whiskey tax. And so. This was during the panic of eighteen nine or eighteen seventy-three when you know, you had hundreds of thousands of people out of work. You had, you know, businesses closing all over the place. People were angry. There were, you know, the, the natural tendency is to blame the president. And this could not have come at a worse time because Grant basically. Had a close personal friend and ally, his personal secretary Orville Babcock, you know. Was one of the people who was involved in this. They literally just stole the entire whiskey tax, which you know, you have to wonder how they thought they were gonna get away with it. But. Orville Babcock was Grant's personal secretary, which at the time is similar to, you know, your, your, your White House chief of staff nowadays. And so Babcock begged his, his friend Grant for a pardon. And Grant gave him one, which made him look guilty. And so you can see in the political cartoon here that. Grant is seen as kind of the linchpin of the, of the whole. Scandal. Because of his pardon Babcock. Oh, we got another person. So. And another person. So. That of course is going to make Grant look even worse when. The Democrats who had been literally on quote death's door as a political party. Were suddenly revived by the ability to. You know, go after the Republicans on an issue. And they started investigating the Secretary of War, William Belknap, who had been basically taking kickbacks. Yes, Olivia, I see your microphone. Go ahead. Never mind.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know it was on.
You're fine. So anyway. This actually is a parallel to stuff we were talking about in current events. Does anybody know? Why is what happens in this scandal being referenced in the news today? It's because when they uncover the fact that he had been taking kickbacks, they impeached him. And Belknap, of course, was like, you know, mortified that he had been found out. And so he resigned his post as Secretary of War. But the impeachment trial went ahead anyway. So how does that parallel? What's going on nowadays in the news? It's, it's seen as. Go ahead, Ali.
How he, is it to do with Trump? Like how he's being impeached and stuff?
Right, because he like, there's no way they're gonna get the trial done before he is out of office on the twentieth. So. This is seen as a precedent. They're like, well, it's been done in the past where someone has been out of office, but they still went ahead with the impeachment trial anyway. And so. That looks like that's gonna kind of serve as a precedent for the impeachment of the second impeachment of President Trump. But Belknap missed being convicted by a very slim margin in the Senate. But this is the nail in Grant's political coffin because you know, the, the cries of corruption. Are now just all over the place and the Democrats have kind of seized upon this issue as the paramount political issue. And the anger that people are feeling over. The destruction of their, you know, their economic prospects. Is, is being kind of funneled at Grant via the whole corruption issue. So. At this point, Grant is a political kryptonite persona non grata politically and. We'll come back to it in just a little bit, but. Colorado territory had. Basically been, you know, gathering more and more people due to mining. And we had already talked about the Pike's Peak Gold Rush, the, the silver boom. And so you had, you know, a number of towns that, you know, were boom towns, which actually ended up turning into actual cities. Denver, Golden City and Boulder being the most prominent of those boom towns, which you know, didn't turn into ghost towns, but turned into actual thriving cities. And the only real problem for settlers in Colorado territory was the Cheyenne. And so as US government troops moved into the area and the Cheyenne kind of were, were moved out of the area. And ended up joining with the Sioux and others. More and more people were able to move in and settle. And they reached the sixty thousand person threshold. Colorado. Did enter the union on the centennial of the birth of the country. So eighteen seventy-six. You know, is one hundred years after seventeen seventy-six. And so they call Colorado the Centennial State. And they entered into the union as our thirty-eighth state in eighteen seventy-six. Alright. We're gonna be getting into big city politics and political machines in a much larger way as we get into this next unit. But. The first big political machine boss is Boss Tweed, William Marcy Tweed. Who was a minor, you know, official in New York City. I think he was like the comptroller of, or something. And he basically had figured out a scheme to manipulate the system in New York City with immigrants. So. Can anybody tell me? Do you know what a political machine is? Cause you still hear that term used nowadays. What is a political machine? Anyone?
A political machine is basically someone funnels money into their own government to make it form and basically do it to their whim.
Okay, that's, you know, you, you hear this thrown, you hear these words thrown around. So you know that there is some sort of corruption. And very possibly having to do with money. Anyone else? I heard someone else about to talk as well.
Well, I was gonna say, because I, I know, because I was in the class that got to this slide. But basically he would take advantage of immigrants. And he would basically tell them to vote a certain way. And in return, he would give them things. So it was kind of, he was bribing people into voting because they didn't really understand what they were doing. So basically he was a political machine because he could control the outcome of pretty much any election because he had control over every immigrant vote.
Or, or a lot of the immigrant vote. Yeah. So, so, so faith, you are correct. And Ethan, you know, in general, you're, you're, you are correct as well. Because generally speaking, political machine is. Defined as a corrupt system to, that is used to manipulate votes. So nowadays it would be more money oriented. But back at this time, when political machines are first born, like Faith is saying, this is. Taking advantage of the rather unique situation in New York City where you have huge numbers of immigrants coming in just right off the boat. A lot of them not speaking much English, going into ethnic boroughs. And Tweed just happened to see that there was an opportunity here. That, you know, you have all of these people in New York City who have the right to vote, but don't necessarily understand what that means. And so like Faith was saying, he would. Offer them the favor and protection of his organization. In return for their vote. And so, you know, it's like, all you have to do is vote the way we want. A lot of them didn't even really have a, a strong understanding of what democracy was and how it worked. Because they were unfamiliar with it from the places that they had come from. And. He, he would say, you know, like, you, you need a job, right? Well, I know business owners in New York City. I can get you a job. You need a place to stay. I can find you a place to stay. You, you wanna make sure your family is taken care of around Christmas time. I can help you with that. And so his organization basically, as it grew and, and gained more power, of course. It made it easier and easier for him to do favors for, for immigrants who would vote the way he wanted them to. And he benefited. Because he needed, he had a construction company and he needed to get city contracts to build things. And so there was a new area that was being developed. It was an area known as Harlem. Kind of, it, it was the boonies of New York back then, but of course it's not, it's, it's right in the heart of the city now. But you know, they needed a, a new sewer system. And so he would, he, he would charge, you know, way, way more than. Anybody else, but still get the contract. Cause normally you, you have the contract going to the lowest bidder. But he would get paid, you know, double, triple. In order to, to do these. Contracts. And so that's what we call graft. And I, and we did talk about that earlier with the credit mobley scandal. It's just a, a typical scheme that people use to get rich off of the government. It's, it's, it's a corruption scheme. And so his political machine became very influential, very powerful. And out of Tammany Hall, which was kind of the Democratic headquarters in New York City, he was able to. Kind of run the city, so to speak, because he could make or break any, any mayoral candidate. Looks like Zach is joining us. So. That basically. Made it so. You know, he was kind of the unofficial kingpin of New York City until. The. Most unlikely of people challenged his authority and brought him down. And that was probably the most famous political cartoonist in our country's history. And this is something I think I forgot to mention in fourth block when we covered this. Thomas Nast, who is, by the way, a Republican and, you know, cause he's in opposition to Tweed, who's a Democrat. He's the one who gives us the, the animals that symbolize the two parties. What are, what are the two animals for the two parties that are both kind of seen as, as ways to?
And.
An elephant and.
A donkey.
Yeah.
So which is the more insulting animal? You know, obviously.
Probably the donkey, given its nickname.
Yeah.
Especially given its other nickname.
So obviously, since he's a Republican, he's gonna give the insulting animal to the Democrat, right? So you know, the Democrats were seen as obstinate and, you know. Just all the bad qualities that were associated with, with a donkey. And of course, you know, people lived in much closer proximity with animals at the time. So it was, it was something that was not lost on a lot of people. But. The elephant, you know, kind of symbolizing forgetfulness and slowness to react and et cetera, became the symbol for the Republicans. So Nast is, is well-known for a number of reasons, and that's one of them. But basically he. Started lampooning Tweed in his political cartoons. And you can see some of them here. Where even immigrants who didn't understand much English. Cause people have a tendency to kind of zoom in on, on pictures a little bit. When there's a lot of text, it's, you know, it's just like, oh, it's too overwhelming, especially if you don't know your English very well. But you can, you kind of zoom in on this and you're like, okay, I can, I can read this, this little bit right here. You know, what, what does that mean? What does that mean? You ask somebody and, and counting their strength. I know who that is. That's Tweed. That's the guy who helps us out. Wait, wait a minute. What is this? And then so people started to realize that Tweed was taking advantage of them and taking advantage of their vote and getting rich off of it. And so the next election around Tweed noticed that his, his numbers were down. Like he's like, I'm not getting near as many votes. What's going on? And they're like, sir, it's, it's that cartoonist. And so Tweed was like, you know, in normal times, I would kill this man, you know, but obviously I would, you know, go to prison. It's too high profile. I can't. And so he offers Thomas Nast, one of the most insane bribes I've ever seen. He offers him. I believe if I'm remembering correctly, five hundred thousand dollars to just disappear into Europe. And he's like, just go on a never-ending art field trip. You like art, right? Go to all the big cities in Europe, just, you know. And to Nast's credit, he did not take the bribe. I, I don't know if I'm remembering the total exactly right there, but I'm pretty sure it was something in that range. Anyway. Nast's cartoons really cut into his public support. And eventually a district attorney in New York City by the name of Samuel Tilden, a guy who was looking to make a name for himself. As an anti-corruption figure, someone who was fighting corruption. Decided to go after Tweed because everybody kind of knew that Tweed was this corrupt political boss. So if you wanted to, you know, get a reputation for going after corruption, he's the perfect target. And Tilden went after him and, you know, kind of a long story. Tweed leaves the country for a little bit and then comes back later, but they catch him, they throw him in jail and he ends up dying. Penniless in jail. And so that's kind of the, the end to this, this long dramatic story of, of his political career. But really it is just this, this humble little political cartoonist that is, is the guy that pretty much does him in. So, but that, that's of course not the end of political machines. That's just the end of a particular political machine politician. But other people are going to follow this same strategy and are going to establish political machines in cities all across the country. And then those political machines are going to network across the country as well. So we'll be talking as we get into the eighteen eighties about massive political machine networks and the influence they have on national elections. Rather than just like, for instance, local elections in New York City. Alright. That takes us to a rather interesting little side note in American history. The Irish who are famous for their tempers. End up. You know, basically kind of. Starting an independence movement there. Again, this is an AP Euro topic, but there are a series of revolutions in Europe. Around this time, we mentioned this already when we talked about German immigrants in the eighteen forties. But the eighteen forty-eight revolutions had kind of led to this movement among the Irish to gain their independence from Britain. And of course, Britain was having none of it, you know, being at kind of the height of their power. As, as a world spanning empire, they weren't about to let the Irish right next door leave. And so the Irish Republican Brotherhood basically continued to do little acts of terrorism here and there. And they would come up with these harebrained schemes. And, and by the way, they, they called themselves the Fenians in the United States. And in, in our country, the Fenian movement was led by Michael Dohini and John O'Mahony. And their harebrained scheme in our country was to basically. Take Canada over. I mean, like, like that's really gonna happen. And. Hold it hostage in exchange for Ireland getting its freedom. And so these crazy Irishmen would like mount little, you know, offensives into Canada. And attack cities and forts. And, and these little incursions became known as the Fenian raids. Canada finally, you know, was able to capture some of them. And, and some of the public hangings really kind of made people pause and say, don't wanna, don't wanna do that anymore. Like for instance, when. The Fenian Patrick Whelan was captured and. Hung, publicly hung for the murder of a Canadian politician Dom, Tom DRC McGee. Alright, so that is the Fenian movement. And that takes us to. A sport that we have already talked about, but which is now becoming really popular. And that of course is what is now known as America's pastime or baseball. And. Really, New York City is, is this, is the place where people like start to get really obsessed with baseball. And the National League is founded and of course, other cities, you know, form ball clubs and want to compete with ball clubs in New York City. Like the Yankees. And. The, the level of play keeps increasing. And of course, it's fun to watch these, these very talented players. And so some of the early greats in baseball history include players like Cy Young. He was a pitcher. Willie Keeler, Buck Ewing, Candy Cummings, Cap Anson and King Kelly. And. One notable kind of. Story from this era is Cap Anson in particular. Basically deciding that he did not wanna play with black players. And so even though there were some, some black players who did play a little bit in the new major leagues of baseball. Like Moses Fleetwood Walker being the, who was the very first black player. They didn't last long because Cap Anson and others would just simply refuse to play with them. And like the entire team would, he would convince the entire team not to go out onto the field as long as there was a black player on another team. And so this kind of led to the banning of, of black players from Major League Baseball. Of, of course. You know, Jackie Robinson, we all know the Jackie Robinson story. We'll, we'll get to it when we get to fourth quarter, but. He, he'll be the one to successfully break the color line eventually, but the color line kind of gets established at this time. And black players form their own league, the Negro leagues to give their athletes an outlet and, and a place to play. But baseball is becoming a real American obsession. So again, kind of a sport that grew out of cricket, but had a lot of twists that were very much American. And, and became, you know, kind of the first American sport that was, was created. Is now really gaining popularity all across the country. Alright, and. I think I've mentioned this before, but I really am not a fan of Custer. So. When I feel like he kind of gets what he deserves here. This is a little bit of poetic justice for his, his, his many misdeeds. But the US Army. Had kind of gone out west and. had kind of, um, gone out west and, um, was trying to find a way to deal with the massive horseback army that had developed, uh, under the control of two new leaders among the Sioux, um, Crazy Horse, uh, who was the leader of the young warriors and Sitting Bull, who was kind of one of the more elder, um, you know, uh, spiritual leaders. Um, uh, and this included Sioux warriors, it included Arapaho, um, Cheyenne, uh, et cetera. And it was massive. I think it was somewhere in the range of four thousand warriors on horseback. Uh, just in, in like, again, just like Red Cloud's War, literally unstoppable by the US Army. So the US Army like was, was, uh, um, they're like, we wanna know where this, this horseback army is. It's somewhere out in the wilderness of the West, but we don't want any units to engage. So, uh, the US West was being kind of flooded with soldiers, um, and, uh, they were told, find it and then report back, but do not engage. So, um, of course, Custer is in charge of one of the many, um, military units out there looking for this particular, um, horseback army, um. And he is out in the wilderness of what is now the state of Montana, um, near the Little Big Horn River. And, uh, he comes upon, he and his men in the Seventh Cavalry come upon a settlement. And, um, it's just like before with Washeeda Creek, you know, he's like, perfect, okay? Uh, it's a Sioux settlement. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna claim that I'm, that I'm killing a bunch of Sioux without telling people whether it's warriors or, you know, noncombatants. And, uh, so he's like, Major Reno, take part of the men and go straight at them. Uh, the rest of the, of the cavalry is gonna come with me and we're gonna come around behind. So as you're coming at them and they see you and they start to panic and they start running the other way, we're gonna basically come up from behind and just slaughter them all. And we're gonna get like, he, what he wanted was a big casualty count because he wanted to get his name in the newspaper. Um, so, you know, he could run for office someday. Well, he's definitely gonna get his name in the newspaper, but not in the way that he predicted. So as, um, Major Reno comes at the, um, the, the settlement, uh, he and his men go around. But they don't realize that this settlement is actually on a ridge, uh, which is on the edge of that big horseback army that they had all been looking for. And so when he has met and his men go around to kind of come at this settlement from the other side, they run smack into that, that massive horseback army. And of course, the natives are just like, what? And they, they all jump on their horses and they start that same kind of process that they had done, uh, in previous engagements. Yeah. Olivia, go ahead.
So would you say that was like a impulse decision or like they didn't think too much about what would happen if they did that?
Well, I mean, any, any, uh, US Army, uh, unit foolhardy enough to go head to head with this massive horseback army is, is, is going to get the same treatment. Like they've won every time they've done it. So why wouldn't they do it? You know, it's like the, are you, you're talking on the part of the Native Americans?
Yeah, it just, um, when you were describing it, it just sounded like they didn't expect that.
Right. I mean, they would, they didn't expect, you know, a US Army unit, especially after the, the pummeling that the US Army had taken during Red Cloud's War, which, you know, the Treaty of Fort Laramie was only eight years prior to this. Uh, so, um, uh, you know, this is eighteen seventy-six and, uh, um, the, uh, you know, uh, so anyway, just to make a long story short, um, uh, Custer and his men are, have, have run right into the quote hornet's nest of, of, of the massive Sioux Army and find themselves surrounded. And their, their, their situation is absolutely hopeless. There, the, the natives are, are circling them on horseback and just firing arrows and bullets into their midst. Many of the, many of Custer's men had gotten off their horses when using their horses as shields. Uh, but the warriors are just too accurate with their, um, their projectile weapons. Again, just from their skill, you know, as hunters. And, uh, they wipe out every last, um, uh, person in, uh, Custer's command in, uh, you know, the part that, the part of his command that had gone into, um, you know, that was gonna circle around. I think it was about two hundred and seventy-six men in the Seventh Cavalry. Um, and they just, they kill every, all of them, uh, including Custer himself. Uh, and, um, of course, Custer does get his name in the newspapers, but not quite in the way that he thought he was going to. Uh, and so this becomes known as Custer's Last Stand as, uh, as he and his men are basically, um, you know, uh, slaughtered by the Native American tribe. Yeah. Go ahead, Nick. What were you gonna say?
I know, um, that now we kind of look down upon him for like his actions, but at the time, was he considered kind of like a martyr or a war hero for his actions? Or did people kind of know who he's coming?
Okay, it depends on who you, who you're talking about. If you're talking about the general public, people had a more sympathetic eye towards, uh, Custer because he was considered, you know, like Native Americans were considered an existential threat to us. They were, they were an enemy. They were, they were, people were like, they're, they're like, our team is, is, you know, US Army. Their team is, is natives and they kill us. And so they're our enemy. And so of course, you know, he, um, but for the US Army, this was a huge embarrassment. Like they were looking to avoid the bad press that they had gotten, you know, when we pretty much lost Red Cloud's War. And now, yeah, like this, this is like, the, this is like a PR disaster. I mean, massive headlines across the country, um, you know, uh, red, you know, uh, uh, Custer's Last Stand, you know, Custer and his men are surrounded. So actually, if you look in, um, movies and, and other things that depict this, I mean, even to the modern day, um, you've got, uh, Custer portrayed as this sympathetic figure, this hero that was fighting the natives kind of thing. But, you know, as historians kind of look back on this and take a more sober look at, uh, at, at Custer and who he was, we're, we're like, yeah. This guy, not a, not a great guy. I mean, Washeeda Creek, he did also lead a, um, a little expedition into the very heart of Sioux, the Sioux territory, uh, which is actually what sparked this army being formed in the first place. It was called the Powder River Expedition. Uh, and they went into the Black Hills. The Black Hills are like the holy land of the Sioux, like the place where all of the ancestors live. Like you don't go there. But what, what could be, what could cause white men to go to a place like that? Um, and dare to upset the Sioux? Like what is the one thing that could draw white people out there? Anyone wanna guess? It, it.
Gold.
Gold, yeah. And so the Powder River Expedition was where he basically, uh, led this rather daring expedition where prospectors were able to confirm, yes, there's gold in them there hills. And so, um, that is when, you know, the Sioux were like, okay, it's time to go to war. And that's, they, they had, um, kind of formed this massive army in response. So, uh, Custer is, is hip deep in this. I mean, he, he, you know, he doesn't escape possibility. But like, yeah, I've seen various depictions of him in the movies. I think there was one called The Son of the Morning Star. Um, that was, I, I forget what year it was made. It was, it was a little while back. But, um, that, that movie, even, you know, in the modern day, still portrayed him in a rather sympathetic light. So, um, but yeah, this is a massive embarrassment for the United States military. So, um, you're gonna see that the military is going to step up its response, um, and try to deal with, uh, the Sioux, uh, military or the Sioux Army, the horseback army once and for all. But of course, we learned our lesson in what Red Cloud's War about trying to go face to face with them. It's just not, it just doesn't work. We, 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 we're gonna continue to get beat if we, if we try to do that. So, um, that is Custer's Last Stand. And, um, yeah, on the, on the race relations front, um, there was an important, um, uh, bill that was passed. And this is, um, a bill that actually had been sponsored by Senator Charles Sumner, uh, the guy who had been beaten nearly to death with a cane prior to the Civil War, radical Republican. Um, one of the people who was one of the biggest proponents of African Americans getting full equality in the South. Um, and, uh, he basically introduced a bill in eighteen seventy that would outlaw discrimination, racial discrimination in many facets of Southern life. Because he was noticing that as these, um, white, uh, governments got back into control of, um, uh, southern states, they were, they were continuing to pass li- state laws that weren't contradicted by the Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six, which had, you know, contradicted the black codes, but were still creating a situation known as segregation in the South, where, um, we're gonna talk about this more next unit, uh, where African Americans were, um, uh, segregated away from the white population in, um, you know, public accommodations, transportation. Of course, you know, in contravention of the black code or the Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six, they were trying to make sure that black people couldn't be on juries. Cause again, that would be like a, a ticket for white people to do whatever they wanted. Um, uh, and, and get away with it. Yes, Ailie, go ahead.
So did this act, um, this is what caused segregation?
W- we don't really see segregation on a large scale until whites get control of most of the South. Um, and that is gonna have to happen with the US military not being there. So for those of you in fourth block, you know what happens and, and how that all occurs. But for those of you who haven't gotten this far yet, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on answering. So, so Ailie, we are, we haven't gotten to the point where segregation is really gonna take hold on a, in a large scale. But this is a radical Republican looking at certain places in the South where whites were now in charge. And, you know, being disgusted with the fact that they were trying, they were still trying to separate society. So, cause of course, white southerners wanted to go back to the way it used to be before the Civil War. So they were, you know, they were trying to segregate the races. Uh, they didn't wanna live side by side inequality with, with their former slaves. And so, hopefully that answers your question. Ethan, go ahead.
On a specific note, was there any like specific time where the whole reconstruction effort, you know, trying to keep black equality kind of just stalled? And then we got that hundred years of segregation?
Uh, yeah, that's right after, um, the election of eighteen seventy-six and the compromise of eighteen seventy-seven. So I'm going to answer your question in like two slides, uh, or like one or two slides. So, um, you are, you are anticipating what is coming up. So Sumner, um, dies in eighteen seventy-four. Um, and, uh, uh, as, as the old guard of, of, of radical Republicans start to, um, fade away, you know, due to getting old, uh, you know, getting voted out of office, et cetera, a new group of, of Republicans kind of, um, become the new influential leaders in Congress. And these, uh, new leaders are not the, the radical Republicans of old who are motivated by their emotions over the war, et cetera. These guys are a bunch of Republicans who are machine politicians in the tradition of Boss Tweed, who have built political machines that span across the country and who are good at manipulating votes and have become party bosses. As a result, they're known as spoilsmen. Um, you've got people like Roscoe Conkling of New York City, who, um, uh, was very much like Boss Tweed, um, you know, uh, uh, I think he, he was in charge of like the docks, uh, in, in a good part of the city. Um, and I forget the exact, uh, title he had. Um, and then, uh, Jane, I think he was like the, the, the head of the Customs House or something in New York City. Uh, and, and that was his base of operations, but he was very similar to Tweed and how he did things. Um, and then you had James G. Blaine of Maine, um, who, uh, was, you know, this, this unbelievably, um, corrupt, uh, machine politician as well. And so they were trying to build these massive political machines and they didn't necessarily care as much about the issues that the radical Republicans used to care about. Um, so in order to get this bill through Congress, because this was, you know, it was still something that the Republican Party wanted. The old guard of the Republican Party still wanted it. They had to strip out a lot of the, the provisions that really would have made a difference in the South. So, um, the part related to schools was a real s- a real stickler, you know, for, for white southerners. They did not want their children being educated in the same school as black children. And so, um, they had to strip that out. And, um, seven black members of Congress, cause remember, under, um, the Reconstruction Governments, um, uh, in the South, there were black senators and black congressmen. Um, seven, seven of them, uh, were able to kind of, uh, push this bill through. Uh, Representative James Rapiere of Alabama and Senator Bruce Blanch of Mississippi were the leaders. And, um, this was signed into law. So it did attack segregation to a certain extent, but not in the areas that were the most critical. Uh, so that is the Civil Rights Act of eighteen seventy-five. It is the last civil rights bill you will see until we get to the civil rights movement, um, in the nineteen sixties. So like Ethan is saying, we're getting to that hundred year span of, of segregation and racism in the South. And it all has to do with one of the most controversial, um, uh, elections in US election history. So, um, again, incredible parallels to what we're talking about nowadays in the news. Um, disputed electoral returns, et cetera, you know. And so, um, Grant was done politically, like the, he was like, he was so, um, tarnished by the corruption scandals that he was abandoned by the Republican Party, even though he wanted to run again. And so the Republicans are like casting around, trying to find somebody in their party who has a, um, reputation for reform, which was actually a bit of a challenge because there's so many, um, you know, spoilsmen in their, in their, uh, party now. But eventually, uh, they're able to, um, uh, kind of agree. The, the various spoilsmen in the party are able to agree on a candidate, um, named Rutherford B. Hayes, who was a governor of Ohio, who did have a, a, a reputation for being somewhat of a reformer. Um, so they actually run against the spoil system that they are very much profiting off of in various cities. And so, um, you're gonna see that the Republicans are going to sway votes in the North, uh, based off of this. But the Democrats who have had life breathed back into them by the issue of corruption, they run a real reformer, a guy who, the guy who had brought down Boss Tweed, who had a, a reputation not only in New York, but across the country as kind of a crusader against corruption. Samuel Tilden, former DA. Yes, Ethan, go ahead.
Um, on my, uh, second packet, it stops at the Civil Rights Act of eighteen seventy-five. I tried to see if I lost a page or not, but.
You must have, yeah, your, your last page must have fallen off. Um, uh, yeah, so like.
The staple's still in there.
Yeah, like, but it's still, that doesn't mean that the page could have worked itself off.
I'll try and find it, but.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I can always, um, email you a PDF of it. Um, or if you can find the old PDF of the, uh, of the unit two packet, which is in your email somewhere. Um, you can just print that last page off of it, but, uh, yeah. Um, so anyway, um, uh, there were some corruption scandals, um, uh, surrounding some of the carpetbagger governments in the South. You know how we talked about the, uh, um, the Kushtada massacre and the Colfax massacre? I mean, and I think it was the Colfax massacre that had to do with, uh, the establishment of the carpetbagger government in Louisiana. Um, so in the South, uh, again, people vote on racial lines. So in order to kind of get the South on his side, uh, um, uh, Tilden, of course, is, is advocating, uh, for getting the army out of the South. And so, uh, white southerners who had stepped up their activities even more, uh, with the Klan, were going to try to swing all of those southern states, um, in Tilden's direction. This was gonna be a close election because the Republicans were able to swing a lot of votes, um, you know, just based off of that momentum from the Civil War, which was only, you know, it's, it's, it's only been just a little over a decade since the, since the end of the Civil War. Um, uh, and their, their machine politics. Uh, so basically that's kind of where things are at here is, is, um, you know, you've got these two, uh, contenders. Uh, so the Democrats have been revived, you know, they're like in eighteen seventy-two, just this four years prior, remember? They didn't even have a candidate, um, when they were, you know, when Grant was running for a second term. And they're just like, we just endorsed the liberal Republican guy Greeley. Uh, yeah, Elizabeth, go ahead.
So like the Republicans were, they were also running on like reform. So like the Republicans were, they were also running on like reform and stuff, so they were like running against themselves?
Yeah, they're like, uh, they're, they're, they're like hoping everybody's stupid enough to not to realize that they, they themselves are corrupt. Um and again, you know, we don't have the, we don't have the twenty-four hour news coverage that we have today. So um. Uh it, it's not nearly as easy to, to, to kind of ferret out. You have to really read the newspapers and, and, and be very well read. Uh which a lot of people were uh at the time, but to, to understand kind of really where things were at in terms of, you know, how corrupt the Republican Party had become. Uh but yeah, they were, they were running a candidate against the very issue, which was kind of at the heart of the Republican Party at the time. Uh yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
Um so you said not every, they hoped like, like not everybody was smart enough to realize that they were corrupt. What happened to the people that like? Were smart enough to understand that like, like the system was just, it just wasn't working and is corrupt and I don't know, like what happened to them?
Okay, I, I wanna, I wanna turn this question around and ask you, if you were a voter who was smart enough to realize how much corruption was out there, which party would you vote for? Like which candidate would you vote for? Who is the? Go ahead.
Whoever like shares my same opinion, I guess.
Right, but out of the two, out of, out of Hayes and Tilden, who is the obvious anti-corruption person? Like. Hands down, definitely has the chops, has the reputation, has, has done the work. Who is?
The Democratic had a lot of scandals.
Well, I mean, they had Boss Tweed, but remember, Boss Tweed was bought, brought down by the very same guy who is now running. For um the can, the, the Democrats as their candidate for president. Does Tilden have a reputation as an, uh like a real bona fide reputation is anti-corruption? Did he bring down Boss Tweed? I mean, I'm just asking, does he have a real reputation?
Does, but still, you know, like, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there, nobody's perfect. You're right. There is no, there is no unblemished party here. Um but if you, if you had to choose and you really were well-read.
I would choose Tilden, you know?
Yeah, you choose Tilden.
It just seemed like the most obvious, cause I don't know.
Yeah, but Tilden has issues too, because remember, he is offering white Southerners. He's saying to them, I'll take the army out of the South, which is gonna leave, you know, black people basically defenseless against the Klan. Which has stepped up its activities even more because Grant didn't do anything, especially during his second term. So um. Uh Tilden is, you know, no, no angel either, but again, you know, people's views on racial justice. Uh weren't nearly as strong back then. I mean, the radical Republicans were more the exception rather than the rule. Um uh but they weren't nearly as strong back then as they are nowadays. So um. This is uh a very close election, okay? And so you can see that um. The entire South has gone blue, except for three states where there are disputed returns. So Ethan, yes, go ahead.
Just wanna point out that by today's standards, this isn't close.
Yeah, no, right. Like, we, we have, we have put a, a, a brand new definition to close, yes. Um but uh, but still. Okay, so now, I wanna say this. You can see in the North, it's kind of funny. People in the North who are anti-corruption, who are, who are mad over what happened with Grant. And remember, a lot of that is fueled by the panic of eighteen seventy-three, which people blame Grant and the Republicans for. Even though, you know, they don't control the economy, e- especially because of the, the scandals in the Grant administration. And of course, the Republicans had tried to repudiate all that. With running Hayes, but they took um New York. Uh which has the most electoral votes out of any state in the coun- well, almost, yeah, uh it is still the most. Um it has the most electoral votes because that's of course, you know, Tilden's home state. So even though the Republicans take the West and a, a good portion of the Midwest um in, in the Northeast here. Uh the Democrats make real inroads there, but what is going to tip the electoral count in their favor? Is the South. And so um even though they're anti-corruption in the North, they're all about, you know, racism in the South. So they're, they, you know, they're, they're not a beacon of light by any manner, you know, any means, but these three states right here, South Carolina, Florida and Louisiana. Why do you think they have disputed returns? Why, why is there this, you know? What, what could possibly be the explanation? Remember?
I'm pretty sure Republicans would claim that, oh, it's the racist Democrats that are suppressing the black vote.
Yes, exactly, yeah. And so um you have black voters who are risking life and limb going to the polls. Um who are uh, you know, um trying to say, hey, you know, the Republicans won these states and the Democrats are like, no. No, they didn't. And of course, black voters are, are very much allied with the Republican Party. Because they want the army to stay in the South because it's the only thing that stands between them and having to face the Klan. Without any protection at all. And so um. In this election. Tilden wins the popular vote. He is just like, I think, one or two votes shy of, of getting that majority he needs in the electoral uh vote. And Hayes is way behind. So Hayes needs like the entire five percent to catch up. Um and he'll win by just, he'll just barely win if he gets all three of these states. Um and uh of course, uh the um uh the Democrats feel like because Tilden has won the popular vote. And, you know, it, that, that pretty much gives him the mantle of victory anyway. Because we haven't ever had an election where somebody has won the popular vote and has lost the electoral vote. So. We have a crisis because um this goes to a special commission in the House of Representatives. Which looks at the disputed returns. Now. Who cheated in the South? The Republicans or the Democrats?
Democrats.
The Democrats did, okay. I mean, they did. They, they, it was racial, you know, uh politics in the South. And so the Klan. You know, and so if this commission looks into this, they're going to find that the Democrats cheated in the South. But. Who was like trying to rig things and cheat in the North in, in, in major ways and was incredibly corrupt in the North and cheated with machine politics in the North?
Republicans.
The Republicans, okay. So there are no beacons of light either. All right, so um essentially, this commission, you know. Uh says, well, uh we're basically going, i- it's, it's in the House, which is controlled by the Republicans. They're like, well. We're gonna award all three states to the Republicans and the Democrats are like. They're losing their minds. This, this is actually another famous Thomas Nast uh political cartoon right here. Um and it says. Notice it says right there, Tilden or blood. And Southerners are like, oh, you want the, the Civil War? Again, you, you want, I mean, they were like, they were threatening that level of vi- violence. They were, I mean, people were not happy, okay? So in a lot of ways, you know, kind of with the, the whole Capitol revolt thing and everything with the violence and whatnot. You've got that same sort of atmosphere where people are so unhappy with the result that they're willing to resort to violence. Yeah, Ailey, go ahead.
Wait, so why'd they choose to give the three states to, to the Republicans?
Okay, is there a legitimate um reason why they would go to the Republicans? Anybody wanna answer that before I do?
Well, specifically for Louisiana, South Carolina and Florida, since those states are, you know, in the South. It's kinda easy to s- show that Democrats were corrupt and suppressed the black vote.
Yeah, i- that, that, that is it. It like, the black vote is being corruptly suppressed in all of the southern states. Because if, if you just let people vote and you didn't try to intimidate them, they're like, intimidating people is voter suppression. If that, if you, if you had no voter intimidation, would, what would the South look like? Would it be red or would it be blue? Just based on population in the percentage.
Completely red.
Right, so any, any state that's blue is, is engaging in voter sup- suppression at this time. Like if it, if it goes Democrat, because people vote on racial lines in the South, we know that it's because of the Klan and, and the Klan's activities. So the Klan had pretty much taken most of the South, um you know. And, and of course, their people are gonna come into office after this election. But they had intimidated enough voters away from the polls in most of the South to take it, except for in these three states. Yes, Autumn.
Okay, I was just thinking about like what you were saying about voter suppression. It sounds like there's still a lot of blacks in the South. Is that true?
Uh the black population in the South, does it outnumber the white population? Um there is a, a, a significant migration of, of uh black uh people. Out of the South into northern cities uh around the time of World War One um and kind of. And that continues all the way up through World War Two. Uh it's called the Great Migration. So.
Was that inspired by job opportunity or I'm guessing both push and pull from the South?
Well, it's, it's, it's a little bit of both. There's push factors and pull factors. Like the pull factors are factory jobs in the North during the wo- world wars. Where, you know, like literally they're, like that, we had so many men going overseas to fight. That um women were being told, hey, we need you in the, in the, in the factories when that was like not a thing because of the domestic sphere. We're gonna get to all this. But, you know, there were job opportunities for black people who were just sick and tired of the segregation. And the humiliation in the Jim Crow South. Um so. I don't know if um the majority population is uh like, that's a great, that's actually a really good question, uh Autumn. Uh if somebody wants to look that up and see like in a state, for instance, like Georgia, you know, like because that is actually a, a state where there were disputed results. This last time around. Um what is the majority population? Is it majority black or majority white? I would really be interested to see. I would, I would assume that in a lot of southern states, um even though there is that migration that there are. That the black population is still larger. Um but um I could be wrong, but I'm pretty, I, I would, I would um. I would bet that that's still the case in a lot of southern states. Um but of course, uh since the civil rights movement. The parties have switched on that and we're, we're gonna get to that when we talk about the elections of sixty-four and sixty-eight. So, but Autumn, you still have your hand up. Did you have anything else you wanted to, to add on that or?
Yeah, I was wondering, so for the blacks that are still in the South, what is keeping them there? I know it's not easy to just pick up and move, but I feel like there's no reason to be in the South for them.
Okay, are, are you talking about like at this time period or are you talking about now?
Uh, time period.
This time period? A, a lot of it has to do with not having any money to move um and not having a lot of pull factors up north. To pull people. Like, if you had money to move, um you might go in a different direction from. You know, the South, you might go out west where there's opportunities uh and things are more kind of equal. Um and you were actually gonna talk about that next unit. So those of you who are in sixth period, I'm sorry, fourth period, you know, we've already talked about a group known as the Exodus. Uh so yes, uh that is actually an excellent question, Autumn. And um you'll see that there are. But most, most black people are caught up in a system, that system of sharecropping. They're in constant debt. They, that ties them to the land. They're poor, uh and they don't have the money to pick up and go. Uh Kenzie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna note the sharecropping thing.
Yeah, yeah, so um i- i- it's just, it, it's, it's, you know, you can just kind of disappear, uh so to speak. But again, you have to have the money to do that. And that's the problem is, you never get your hands on the cash. Because you would have to sell your crop to get the cash to, to go, but they take your crop. As they, like, they take the cotton before you even get a chance to sell it. So uh it's very hard to get out of that cycle. Because um the crop is gone, uh and you don't have anything to sell to get money to just up and leave. Um Nick, what were you gonna say? Nick?
Yeah, sorry, hold on. Um how were um racial relations in the West at the time period? Because I know in the North, despite like, there was a lot of like advocates for abolitionism. Um I know there were still like some uh people who just didn't want equality or still like very racist towards um African Americans at the time. But how was it in the West? Was it any better at all or was it just the same?
Okay, that's a great question. We're actually gonna talk about it when we get to the Exodus. So um but um generally speaking. White people uh do not wanna live on an equal basis with black people anywhere in the country. Okay, so uh there is no like racial haven anywhere except. In areas where the Quakers live. Um tho- those are your, that's like your one exception. Um but pretty much everywhere else. Um as long as there's like a small number of black people, like, and it's not a real threat to the white population, they, they're okay. Um but they're still, there's, they still deal with some discrimination. Um but there's no like. Willingness to, to, to really live on a, on an equal basis. Um uh white and black populations. There, there's always going to be some discrimination, except for, you know, areas where religion really motivates people in a, in a dramatic sense, like in the Quaker areas. Um that's an excellent question. Um and, and of course, we're gonna get to this. Uh so. Yeah, the history of race relations in this country is, 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 is a dark one. Um and uh this was something that was brought up during the um summer. Uh the Black Lives Ladder Matter um movement kept saying. You know, that history doesn't get taught in our, in our, in our public schools. So I made a point. Uh when I was um, when I was uh getting my slides together this summer, uh I made a point of covering all of that. History that has been forgotten, that, that, that negative racial history. Uh that of course, a country doesn't wanna dwell on that, you know, in their history books. Um uh so all of the massacres, you know, that, that were cited, that you might have seen, you know, on various things floating around social media. I've got them all in there. Um so, so Nick, you're gonna get to see that, that side of things. Uh and it's in the North as well as the South. Um Brayden, go ahead.
So, like, other than the fact that, like, blacks aren't, or like, former slaves aren't being. Uh like beaten and stuff like they were when they were slaves. Like, how, how is the sharecropping system like any better or any like more tolerated? Cause it seems like it's just the same thing.
I mean, it's as close as white Southerners can get it to the same thing, you know what I'm saying? It's like, they were trying to make a situation where it was as close to the way as it used to be as they possibly could. They missed the good old days of the South. For them anyway, uh where, you know, they were like in charge, you know, and they, they, they ran things and, and, you know. They, they benefited from the, from the labor of the black population. And so sharecropping gets it as close as you can get it. And then of course, we're gonna see that they're gonna add segregation into this. Uh so. I'm actually gonna be probably answering a lot of your question in like the, in just like the beginning of the packet coming up. Like, we're getting to it real, real soon, but um there is, the only real difference is there's no more beatings. There's no more selling people away from their families uh quote-unquote owning people. Um but other than that, um. You'll see. I mean, we're, we're just about to get to the Jim Crow South. So I'll save some of my answer, Brayden, for when we get to that slide. But uh, but yeah, it's, it's going to become very, very unfriendly um in the South for, for the black population. All right, I see a number of hands that are still up, but I don't know if people have forgotten to lower them or if they still have, you know, they wanna contribute. All right, so, oh, and Boyer, I saw your hand there. You were, you hadn't uh had a chance to say anything yet, so go ahead.
Was there anybody already at this point in history that was politically like against sharecropping? Or was it pretty much just like accepted right now?
Radical Republicans are, radical Republicans are up in the North and they want, they wanted Grant to go after white Southerners. They wanted a grant to stop, you know, the inequality in the South, but they're kind of, they're dying out by this point. You know, people are, are, are getting older, they're retiring, they're, they're passing away like Sumner did. Um you know, and, and so that, that breed of Republicans that was fueled by their anger in the Civil War. And some of them for their, their very, you know, strident um, you know, beliefs in racial equality. They were, they were kind of a dying breed. Um so uh things are changing. As there's kind of like a changing of the guard, so to speak, in, in the Republican Party. Um so yeah, there's, there still are radical Republicans and there still are believers, but they're fewer and farther between. And they don't have as much control as they used to. Um Ethan, go ahead.
So um was like, when sharecropping eventually stopped, like it eventually stopped, right? And was it for illegal reasons or reasons that they didn't need it anymore?
Right, um, if you were paying attention to the Georgia Senate race, um, uh, one of the candidates talked about sharecropping. Like his memory of sharecropping in his family, uh, does anybody, well, we talked about this in sixth-
Senator Warnock, right?
Yeah, Senator Warnock, I'm sorry, in fourth hour, we talked about it. Yeah, so Senator Warnock, um, was like, yeah, my, was he like, didn't he say like, my grandfather was a sharecropper? So sharecropping goes all the way up into like the nineteen sixties and still kind of existed in certain little patches beyond that. But you know, as we get kind of into the modern age, um-
So it's simply just kind of phased out, not really-
It did, yeah, and, right, and, and as racism becomes a national spectacle in the nineteen sixties, um, some of the old practices in the South start to fade. Uh, but you know, there are places even today in the South that are a little um, that, that are still pretty racist.
Yeah, some people would claim that the prison system is still a continuation of that, where it's literally they own you.
Yeah, I mean, and, and remember, in the Thirteenth Amendment, they do carve out that exception, you know? Uh, slavery shall not exist, um, uh, except as punishment for a crime where the party shall have been duly convicted. So if you're in, in a prison, um, they can make you work without pay, that, that-
Yeah, apparently, some people, I was like watching a documentary yesterday, it was like pointing out that that was a big thing about the crack crisis of, you know, the late eighties. And it was being pointed out heavily.
Right, putting people in jail for like really long periods of time for drug offenses and then-
Yeah, and then prison labor, basically, it's just we gone right back to that point.
Okay, yeah, and, and again, that's a whole nother kind of can of worms, you know, the whole uh, you know, the drug war and the, and the, the, the heavy sentences and all that, we'll get into that fourth quarter. Um, but yeah, excellent point. Um, so Kenzie, you were next, go ahead.
Oh, I think I forgot to put my hand down.
All right, no problem. Um, Elizabeth, you're next.
Um, so since the, like, you know, sharecropping is pretty much just like the sequel to slavery, it's like the same thing. And the abolition movement had so much traction in the North, how come Northerners aren't like keeping that same energy for sharecropping?
Well, uh, it, I am, I highly encourage you to watch the movie Lincoln, if you haven't watched it yet, because that is the answer to your question. The reason that President Lincoln pushed the Thirteenth Amendment through at the end of the war, when there were still a number of Democrats in the House of Representatives and it was gonna be a really hard fight, was because he knew that once the war was over, the, that most Northerners would just not care anymore necessarily about getting rid of slavery. They were, the most nor-, like, there was a lot of sympathy prior to the war, um, you know, generated by Uncle Tom's Cabin. But the um, um, the anxiety of the South is really what drove. Like, the South was like, you know, like how all these people, you know, how can we live in the same country with them? They are against slavery, but really it was their anxiety. And, you know, the Free Soilers in Kansas, they, they made headlines and whatnot, but they were, in terms of the population, still a numerical minority. Um, and people were turned off on slavery necessarily. They didn't think it was a good thing in the North, um, after, you know, the publication of Uncle Tom's Cabin. But that didn't necessarily mean they were gonna be warriors for racial justice or that they wanted to live on an equal basis with large numbers of African Americans in their own town or their own city. Um, so, you know, there were limits to how, how much, um, you know, uh, how far people were willing to go in terms of abolition, you know, uh, for a cause that wasn't necessarily their own. So that is why Lincoln pushed the Thirteenth Amendment through Congress when he did. Uh, because he was basically trying to say, this is a necessary wartime measure. So if, like, the, the best illustration I could possibly give you for like how that all hashed out and how people's feelings really were on that subject is that movie. So if you ever get a chance and you're, you're bored and you need, you have some time, uh, by the way, it, it, it gives you a, a brilliant picture of like really awesome debates in Congress too. Like some of the, like, some of the, the rhetoric in Congress at that time was just uh, like wow, some of the speechmakers were just amazing. But um, yeah, if you get a chance, watch it because that, that'll give you a, a, a picture of where people were really at um, in terms of their, their views on racial justice. Remember, we can't put our, our biases because we're very much in, like, the, the, the vast majority of the country is very much in favor of racial justice now. Uh, but back then, uh, things were much, much different. Um, so we have to remember not to put our own biases on and, and assume that people had those same biases back then. Uh, Dylan, go ahead.
Was um, indentured servitude still a thing when sharecropping was around?
Um, indentured servitude had died out, um, pretty much, uh, you know, around, it, it was still colonial times when, when it was just replaced by slavery because slavery was just so much better economically. You know, you buy a person and they're, they're yours for life and you, and you don't have to worry about ever paying them anything again. So that whole institution kind of died out, um, relatively quickly once the South kind of transitioned over to slavery. Um, and really, there is no like, you know, travel from Europe and work on a plantation for so many years kind of system that is ever set up again afterwards. So um, it's a good question in terms of like whether or not people would kind of transition over that. But um, you could, you could call sharecropping a, a form of indentured servitude, you know? Um, uh, but, cause you are indentured by your debt. Um, uh, but uh, it was, it was a much more cynical and uh, system where you never, you never were supposed to get out of debt. Go ahead, Dylan, what were you gonna say?
Uh, were there any laws put in place against uh, indentured servitude or sharecropping?
Um, again, it would have to be at the state level, but the force acts, um, like, and, and again, this is where the Civil Rights Act of eighteen seventy-five could have been um, a, a real game changer. But, you know, Sumner, that was his original vision, was to get rid of, of uh, systems like sharecropping and to get rid of the segregation that was appearing. But that was all stripped out by the spoilsman, uh, in order to get the bill through Congress. Because there just weren't, like, there, Congress wasn't as dominated by radical Republicans by this time as it was, it once was. So that was a lot of great questions on this, but, but just wait, okay? So all three states go to the Republicans. The Democrats are literally ready to tear the country apart over this because they feel like their, their candidate won. And so um, they have a meeting, they have like a um, a back room meeting. And in this back room meeting, they say, okay, the Republicans are like, the people who are the most angry are actually white Southerners. Okay, those are the ones who are like ready to tear the country in half over this because they were so, they were so focused on winning and getting the army pulled out of the South by Tilden. So um, Hayes and the Republicans are like, look, what, what if we were, we pulled the army out of the South? Would you, would you be willing to accept Hayes as the winner? If we did what Tilden was promising, I know that you support Tilden because you really, really want the army out of the South. What if we did it? And so notice how the Republican Party has kind of abandoned African Americans in the South. Like, they were once, you know, so um, uh, in favor of African Americans, um, you know, uh, having equality and under the radical Republicans. But now that that, that kind of old guard was, was, was no longer as, is influential, um, the Republicans are willing to trade that away. And so uh, white Southerners are like, you know, if, if the Democrats do it, when the Republicans, they get back in control, they'll just switch it back. But if the Republicans do it, it'll never, it'll never come back. So they take the deal. And that is what we call the compromise of eighteen seventy-seven. Go ahead, Scott, what were you gonna say?
So if they pulled the army out of the South, wouldn't the KKK grow? And then when they grew, they would suppress more votes, the Republicans would lose more elections?
Well, the, the, the Republicans, as long as they win most of the North, are gonna be fine because of the population difference. So um, uh, like, the whole South can go blue and the Republicans will still win most elections if they can just win a majority of the northern states. So um, but that's actually an excellent question. But yeah, they're, they're willing to say the, to white Southerners because white Southerners are the ones who are like real, like literally ready to, to tear the country apart at this point. Uh, Ethan, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
So basically, this is the slide you talked about, where basically the fight against segregation dies.
Yeah, and, and, and uh, for both you and Scott, we're about to look at kind of the next, the next uh, phase of Southern life. Uh, when we get to the next packet here, so actually, I'm gonna jump over to it now. Um, so, wait, wrong one, um, there we go. And let me roll back here, okay? So um, I'm about to come back to this topic in uh, the slide on the Jim Crow South, which is like, I think, the second slide. So we're coming right back to this and I am going to kind of, once and for all, answer those questions you guys have on, on kind of how things hash out racially in the South. Um, so yes, we are starting in on packet three now, our quarter threes packet. And um, I just wanna do a quick overview before we jump back into kind of the racial politics in the South at the time. Because um, this is the era where America goes from a third-rate power, world power, which can't even beat the natives in its own land. I mean, countries around the world were like looking at us and like kind of laughing because they're like, they can't even beat the Sioux. You know, they can't even beat the natives, like, how are they supposed to be like, oh, like a power? Like, they, they want respect from us and they, and they, you know? So we go from that to a world-spanning superpower. Um, by the time we get to nineteen forty-five, so this packet is gonna go from eighteen seventy-seven to nineteen forty-five. Um, I mean, a good uh, sixty-some-odd years, uh, and like in that time period, we go from like nothing, you know, in terms of like world power to the, one of the great behemoths. Uh, and the question is, how does that happen? Like, how does that happen so quickly? Um, what causes us to go from like zero to hero so fast? Uh, so Faith, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Well, I was gonna ask, was it because of the Industrial Revolution that we're gonna go through? And then up to nineteen forty-five, we became a huge military power as well?
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
Basically, the two big things.
Yeah, like in, like, as war becomes more and more mechanized, because we're gonna get into this when we get into the world wars. Um, you know, one guy with a machine-type weapon can just mow down huge numbers of guys on the other side. It's not like it was during the Civil War. Um, the, as war becomes more and more mechanized, being an industrial power really, really matters, um, uh, when it comes to war. So you are, you are hitting like the very heart of it right there. Um, and, and I'm actually gonna roll through some of that uh, in, in this slide here, so um, very good, yeah, you, you, you've kind of hit upon like the, the very heart of it, uh, in terms of where our power comes from. Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Isn't this also, as our come to power also comes at the expense of the other great powers kind of falling from their throne?
Yeah, I mean-
It's not just us rising up, it's them falling down, so we can sort of-
Right, in World War One and World War Two, the, the, the powers of Europe wreck each other. Like, after World War Two, Europe is, is just, I mean, they, they have destroyed each other. Like, the cities of Britain are, the cities of Germany, many of the cities of France are, are destroyed, they're bombed out. Like, we'll have to go in and rebuild a lot of Europe after World War Two, so-
Mainly, we couldn't really have hoped to get on their level unless they somehow fell.
And that, yeah, like, and also they, they somehow destroyed each other, yeah. And, and again, you know, there's gonna be introductions of ideas which are gonna kind of like, you know, destroy the imperialist system and, and there's like, there's so much, like, uh, so yes, you are, you are also hitting on another very important point as well. Um, but again, we're, we're in American history here, so we're trying to focus really on, on like what happens to us? Like, how do we become so powerful? Uh, Scott, what were you gonna say?
So it sounds like a big part of us becoming great was fighting wars overseas because we wouldn't get destroyed, but we would still industrialize.
Okay, um, we're going to step onto the world stage and we have the benefit of having an ocean on either side of us. Um, so we're not worried about, you know, people flying over our country and dropping bombs on our cities uh, as much as like countries in Europe would be, um, et cetera. Uh, so, but yes, get it, we get involved in other, in, in, in world affairs in a much more um, strident way than, than we did before. But again, you can get involved and still get beat. The question is, how do we go in, like, right now, we can't beat the Sioux. Like, in our own country, we, we can't beat them. Um, and so like Britain's like, you know, how do you expect us to take you seriously? Um, you can't even beat the natives in your own land, you know? Which, of course, they're beating natives all over the world, uh, and, and they don't consider anybody who can't do that, um, you know, to be worth their time. Uh, how do we go from that to getting involved in two world wars? And being like a significant power, like coming in and really, you know, kind of like, you know, making a strong, strong impact. So um, that is, that is the question we're gonna try and answer here in this unit. Yeah, go ahead, Jacob.
Um, would one of the things that really affects the United States, stuffy on the world stage, would be like the Spanish-American War and in American imperialism?
Okay, uh, again, yeah, the first president to really, really get interested in making us into a great power, you know, in the world. I mean, you could make an argument that Harrison, Jim, Benjamin Harrison sort of did, but I really is Theodore Roosevelt, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so making America into kind of this, and we actually start out as a peacemaker. Um, uh, yeah, you know, the most warlike president we've ever had will become the first president to get uh, the Nobel Peace Prize, which is just-
Yeah, it's ironic.
In- in- incredible irony there, but be, and it's because we're kind of like this, this, this neutral third party that, that can step in, in a, in a, in a tense situation and kind of say, hey, um, how about you let us arbitrate this dispute? And it's like a, a face-saving measure for both sides, whether-
Yeah, because we didn't really have many loyalties to either, to any of the European countries, so you're really and truly just like a neutral ground.
Right, we're, we're, we don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, we don't have interests that are being threatened. Um, yeah, uh, so yeah, but no, you're right. And the first, like, where we finally step onto the world stage and, and actually like make the list of powers, you know, like there's the five great powers over in Europe, and then there's the list of many lesser powers. We know the, how we finally get on that list is we take um, some territories away from another European power that has, you know, uh, some colonies, you have to have colonies. Yeah. That are to power at this time. And so since pretty much all of the, the untaken land around the world had been gobbled up by this point.
We just need to take them from the other powers.
Right, you had to take them from somebody else who already had some, so that's the Spanish-American War you're referring to. That's where we actually like end up with an empire of our own.
Doesn't that like kind of lead to Spain like collapsing almost and then reforming?
Uh, they have a real difficult time. Uh, I've actually had uh, Spanish exchange students uh, who have like talked about like how they view that history, you know? Uh, and, and the humiliation at the hands of America because Spain was one of the great imperial powers, you know, like early on, they owned almost the entire, you know, uh, you know, this side of the world, they owned like, you know, the western half of North America, Mexico and Latin America.
And they were one of the first people that got here first.
Right, yeah, Columbus, you know, was, was sailing for Spain, so um, you know, they got here first, established that, that, that massive empire and then, you know, pulled all that gold and silver out of the ground, made a huge navy, which then, you know, ended up getting defeated uh, in the Spanish Armada, you know, confrontation with Britain. Yeah. Which then allowed Britain to kind of, you know, kind of take the mantle and rise. So um, so yeah, that excellent, excellent questions, yeah. Um, so again, we're gonna get into this in more detail, but um, yeah, the question is, where do we get the power, so to speak? Where do we get the ability to, like, cause you could, anybody can step in the ring. I mean, you can step in the ring and get hit in the jaw right away and get knocked, knocked to the mat. I mean, the question is, how do you, how do we get in the power to step into the ring and not get knocked out right away? And, and, and to really make an impact. Uh, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
I always kind of see the early part of, you know, like eighteen seventies to like World War One is kind of the period of we interpret acts of aggression that are questionable, to say the least.
Well-
Like, the main, like, saying like, oh, it could really go either way, whether they did that or not.
We have a president at the time who is a bit of an odd duck in some ways. He is a former history teacher who has an opportunity to shape history and is like very- He is a former history teacher who has an opportunity to shape history and is like very intellectual. Like, you know, he he's the only president, you know, that had a doctorate, you know, up to that point in history. Um uh uh Professor Woodrow Wilson uh uh and so uh with a PhD in history. So Woodrow Wilson has different motivations than a lot of politicians. And uh he wants, he has ideas. He wants to fix the international system, but in order to have a quote seat at the table to do that, we have to get involved. Uh so.
Yeah, but it's, it seems like, you know, America doesn't wanna straight up just declare war on someone. So they have to find a way to make it seem like they attacked us first.
Well, yeah, and and I mean, Congress is the one that declares war all the way up until we get to the Cold War. So, so in order for Congress, which is under the pressure of the American people, under the pressure of voters, to actually declare war, you're going to have to have a majority of the American population in favor of going to war.
Wasn't it dealing with the Spanish-American War that was found out to be like a boiler explosion?
That's the USS Maine. We're gonna get to it. Uh again, we're kind of getting into the weeds of stuff that we're gonna get to like later, but um all excellent questions. Uh but let, let's just go through, because I wanna give you kind of an overview of like what historians have kind of said really makes us into the, the behemoth that we, we become. And we're still riding on the, on that success nowadays. We are the super, the lone superpower in the world. We're still coasting on that. Um but um like Faith said, okay, really, the very, very heart of this is the industrialization of our country. As war becomes more mechanized, having enough equipment is going to be a, a decisive factor. And of course, we have a big population, okay? So really, it's all about how many factories do you have? I mean, that's what it comes down to. And so um there's a number of factors that allow factories, like the perfect incubator. Okay, we are like the perfect incubator for tons and tons of factories. From eighteen seventy-seven to nineteen forty-five. And we already kind of talked about this with the market revolution, now the Civil War afterwards kind of like spurred this, this massive um uh growth of factories. Like, because during the Civil War, there were so many government contracts being handed out, you know, to make military equipment that, you know, like, you could start a factory and and, you know, make money, just like the, it, it, you almost have to trip over your own feet not to do it. So um essentially, the, the way that this is, that America becomes the perfect incubator is due to several factors. First of all, you need a huge pool of labor. Um when labor is expensive and companies have to compete for it, it really, it eats into their profits. They can't reinvest their profits into becoming bigger, because they have to spend so much of their profits on labor. So labor has to be cheap and plentiful. Two factors are gonna contribute to that. One of them is urbanization. If you look at this um uh little chart here where my pointer is, um essentially um uh America goes from mostly rural to mostly urban. And um this, of course, is spanning, you know, from the very beginning all the way up uh through kind of like the twentieth century. But the tipping point is right around this time in history, as more and more people move away from the countryside to the cities. They're drawn to the cities by the job opportunities. Uh and and of course, industrialization just feeds on itself. The more factories there are, the more jobs there are, the more jobs there are, the more people wanna move to where the jobs are, et cetera. The other big factor that that creates this massive pool of cheap labor is immigration. There are huge waves of immigration that come into our country, a lot of it having to do with push factors over in uh Europe, where there's just so much upheaval that people wanna leave. Um and a lot of the pull factor in our country is capitalism. Okay, so this is our third thing. So I've hit urbanization, immigration as two big factors. The third big one is the fact that we are this capitalist system. Like, capitalism has, like, it's like, most countries practice some degree of capitalism, but they, a lot of them kind of cheat for certain companies. And there's very few places in the world where it's like what we call unfettered capitalism, where it's just a completely open playing field. And the government just completely stays out of it and doesn't cheat on the fact, on the, on the side of any company at all. Like, they're just, it's wide open. And that's the places where companies have the best opportunities to grow. Um because there's no, there's no government power kind of keeping certain companies on top, so to speak. And so America, with its particular kind of, you know, political makeup and whatnot, uh and beliefs in, in, you know, limited uh government, um of America is the perfect like capitalist incubator. Like, they're, they're, just because you can come to this country and be dirt poor. And if you're smart and you're resourceful, you can become a millionaire. Like, the, there, there is no other place where there is so much social mobility. And so uh capitalism has its good and bad sides, though. Because you may remember that Karl Marx, uh who I have pictured right here, predicted in Das Kapital that one day capitalism would self-destruct. Uh because the rich would get so out of control and would own so much of the means of production and would start replacing humans with machines to the point where the poor would be so marginalized and so poor that they would just get sick of the whole system, rise up and overthrow it. And so um like, this was the laboratory. Like, America was the laboratory to test whether Marxist prediction would come true. Would that happen here? With the government just staying out of it, okay? So um I'm gonna kind of leave that as an open hanging question that we're gonna be like trying to answer as we get through. Um because of course, you're gonna see the wild ride of of um capitalism. Capitalism, unfettered capitalism is like, like a, like a bucking bronco, you know, it's like um you, you, the economy goes on these giant bubbles, which always pop and they crash and and like, so um it's painful because so many people are are like put out of work and and they're, have their lives destroyed and everything. But it also gets rid of all the idiots. Um the people who don't know what they're doing when it comes to investing and when it comes to, you know, business, they all get, get destroyed in these crashes, but the smart people, the ones that really are savvy, they, they survive because they see it coming. And so every time, you know, we go Panic of eighteen nineteen, crash. Panic of eighteen thirty-seven, crash. Panic of eighteen fifty-three, crash. Panic of eighteen seventy-three, crash. You know, Panic of eighteen ninety-three, crash. It seems like every twenty years, there's a crash. And the crash gets rid of all the dumb people. Um like, all, they all lose their shirts. They all, they all lose everything. And the, and the really, really savvy investors, they stay. So every time we have one of these, the, 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 the group of people who stay in, in business are are even savvier and 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 more like, you know, like competitive uh than they were before. And of course, they are all competing against each other, uh making, you know, um our business environment just this incredibly um, you know, tough and brilliant kind of group of of businessmen. And we're gonna have some titans of business that kind of rise out of this. Uh go ahead, Zach, what were you gonna say?
So are all these businesses like turning away possible new investors of like the stocks and stuff? Like, does this turn away a lot of people?
No, no, like you invest in, in um companies that you think are gonna survive. But a lot of times, people invest in the wrong companies, because they get kind of hyped up on, oh, you know, the moment, but they don't see the long-term, the big picture. So um, you know, it, a lot of, when it comes to the investing side of it, which is where these companies get their capital, um a lot of savvy investors figure out who, what a company that is going to survive really looks like. And uh of course, on the business side of it, you have, you know, these, these uh executives who are able to maneuver their, their uh companies into a position where they could not only survive storms, but just gain the entire system completely and just dominate and become monopolies. And that's always the danger in a capitalist system, especially like one where there's no government interference is, that eventually, you're gonna have these super savvy businessmen figure out how to like game the entire system and 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 establish themselves as monopolies and and just wipe out all their competition. Uh but competition is what makes the system work like it's supposed to. Uh Max, go ahead. Max, you had your hand up? All right, I'll come back to you, Max.
Wait, no, 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 sorry. So that twenty-year uh crash pattern for like eighteen, what, fifty-nine, right?
Well, it, it, eighteen, uh thirty-seven, eighteen fifty-three, eighteen seventy-three, eighteen ninety-three, yeah.
Would you say that's like a real, like hard-set pattern that was actually just going on? Or is that just coincidence that every twenty-ish years, we just happen to have a crash in the economy? Or is there something like actually fueling a crash every twenty years?
I would say it's a little bit of both. It's a little bit of both, because um there are, like, people forget. Like, it, it takes about that long for people to forget like how painful it was the last time people were stupid and and were irrationally exuberant, to steal a phrase from Alan Greenspan, um over like companies and and, you know, just because all of those are bubbles. And a bubble is created by people like overvaluing companies, like driving the market to new highs, cause they're all like, gimme, gimme, gimme that stock, gimme, gimme, gimme. And people aren't realizing, you know, like the fundamentals of like what makes companies, what, what makes a company strong, what aren't. So every twenty years or so, um uh people forget, investors forget the lessons of the last very painful, you know, lesson uh and 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 start irrationally uh jumping in and and investing in stuff again. But also, there are factors that, that contribute to each one of these that are unique, that are, you know, it's not like it was something that was just automatically gonna happen. You know, there are railroad bubbles and we're gonna talk about a ship loaded with gold going down in the middle of a hurricane and in, you know, and all of these things that shock markets that you can't say are gonna happen every twenty years. So it's a, it's, it's a little bit of both, but it does, it is funny how it works out that way. Ethan, go ahead.
So um based on that model, it seems people have been getting much more forgetful these days.
Oh, the business world, yeah. But here's the thing, we don't, like, the crashes are, we, the government steps in now and and saves a lot of people from suffering the consequences. So like in two thousand eight, we should have had a crash that would have wiped out a bunch of companies. And um because American voters were like, hey, politicians, don't, you know, uh don't let us lose our jobs, you know, um. Dumb people didn't quite suffer the consequences, and companies that were stupid didn't go under. Uh kind of, you know, clearing out all the dummies, so to speak, and and leaving only the savvy people left, you know. And again, I'm oversimplifying to a certain extent, but um, you know, it, it, it's different now. Uh so it'll be interesting to see where things go, because um you could say that the bubble that we were on never truly totally popped. Um and we're still on it.
Basically, we're, we're gonna go through like a super bubble.
Well, we're fueling it all with government debt, um because the government's just borrowing money to, to patch up, you know, any problems.
The problem is when it's fueled by real worldwide crisis, is that you can't really have an excuse not to use government money.
Government debts, right, but like government debt can't go on forever.
Yeah.
So.
When those scenes of the United States, it seems the debt ceiling gets larger every year.
So the demand in the stock market, even though we were going through all kinds of stuff, you know, it's still there, um that's part of that bubble. Um uh which is being fueled by the fact that people just have this confidence that if something bad happens, the feds will step in and and everybody.
It basically seems that the stock market now just sees uh recessions as opportunity to buy up instead of actual crises.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I mean, we're getting way into the twentieth century with a lot of that stuff, but um but but make it, you're, you're making some excellent points. So um just be aware that as we go through this unit, as we go through quarter three, and we're looking at America from like kind of the end of Reconstruction up through the end of World War Two, we're trying to figure out, how do we become a world-spanning superpower? How do we grow that fast? Like, how do, how do, how does our power grow that fast? And again, a lot of it has to do with industrialization. So the fourth thing on here, I have four factors that are like the, the factors that transform America. It's urbanization, immigration, uh capitalism, which again is like a wild animal. And and Karl Marx's prediction is, you know, that it's going to eventually cause a society to self-destruct. And during the Great Depression, that, that theory is tested. Uh and that's in this unit, okay? Like, like the social fabric literally almost unravels during the Great Depression. And then the, the last one, and probably the most important, is industrialization, which, you know, again, Faith kind of anticipated that as like the, the very, very heart of it. It is what makes us into a world-spanning superpower. Uh but there are other factors as well, so we'll get to all of it. But um uh that's kind of where we're at, okay? In terms of like, you know, this, this unit in terms of what's going on. So um our nineteenth president comes into office because of this deal that is made, um Rutherford B. Hayes. And Rutherford B. Hayes is going to have a very rocky, very difficult time in office. Um not only because of how many people consider him to be an illegitimate president, but because of the upheaval that is going to occur um as workers and companies start duking it out over, you know, uh who's going to get, you know, the profits of the company, so to speak. So labor unions versus workers. So you're gonna see a massive, massive strike, which is going to turn into rioting and burning of major American cities. Um in the very first year of Rutherford B. Hayes's presidency, where he will have to send in troops, which is gonna have terrible political consequences for him. Uh because people are gonna see him as being on the side of big business rather than being on the side of um of the people. Uh but southerners are calling him rather fraud B. Hayes. You know, they're making a little play on his name because they consider him to be illegitimate. So his way of, of trying to placate them is to just give them everything they want. Like, he bends over backwards to just give white southerners everything they want, as a way of trying to, to calm down all that criticism. Uh so you're gonna see, as we get into this very next slide, that white southerners have a completely free hand in the South uh to do whatever they want to the black population. Um we are also going to see um uh a, a movement uh of people to like um change things with laws. Like, they see a social ill and they try to fix it with a law. And that, of course, is the progressive movement. We're gonna see that occur. And some of the little like beginnings of that are with the first lady, um who takes a more active role in social uh concerns when she lends her uh prestige in support to the temperance movement. Does anybody remember what the temperance movement's all about?
Basically, like, get rid. Oh, basically get rid of everyone drinking alcohol and kind of stop that.
Yeah, so, so the banning of, of uh alcohol uh is, you know, of course, we're gonna see that in this unit as well, prohibition. Uh but Lemonade Lucy Hayes um uh makes a name for herself, so to speak, by serving lemonade rather than alcohol and and making a point of only serving non-alcoholic beverages in the White House uh in order to uh kind of promote that social cause. So again, just the very beginnings of a trend that is gonna become very, very important as we get further in. Um and uh Hayes is going to be politically destroyed by the very tough choices he's gonna face as, you know, businesses and and laborers face off against each other. But as he is um facing the, the very real um kind of consequences of of sending federal troops in uh in the, in the uh Great Railroad Strike of eighteen seventy-seven, which we'll talk about. Um he is going to finally become kind of noble and try to um uh take a stand on an immigration issue uh on the West Coast, where he's going to veto uh a, a bill that is very popular in California uh and across the West, which was the Chinese Exclusion Act. So um Rutherford B. Hayes is going to have quite the um tumultuous term in office. So it does, it does make you wonder if um, you know, coming into office after a very similar election here in twenty twenty is going to be uh as, as tumultuous as well. Ho- hopefully, it won't be, but um you never know. Uh so that takes us back to our discussion on the South, because we were discussing this. And uh now that um white southerners were, were quote-unquote back in the saddle in the South. Um, and uh now that um white southerners were were quote unquote back in the saddle in the South. As the Klan uh kind of just steps up its activities and just takes over. Uh, and Afri- and African Americans are like, okay, I don't wanna die, so I'm going to just stay out of this whole politics thing. You know, because of how 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 much of a reaction I get whenever I even think about it. Um, uh, the 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 South is gonna change dramatically now. Um, there is an atmosphere of racism throughout the country. Uh, as the kind of the feelings of the Civil War have faded. And people are are now kind of like faced with that question, do you really wanna live on equal terms with this with this other race? That even people in North are 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 saying, no, they don't. Um, and that is exemplified in a vaudeville show uh that is very popular at the time. Um, so I think we've talked about this already, but um in terms of entertainment. Uh, there's not a lot of recorded stuff because there's no way to record anything. You have to, you have, the only way to record stuff is to write a book. Uh, so uh you have to go see things live. And of course, there are plays which are nice, you know, they're they're the nice plays. Yes, Olivia, what were you gonna say?
Um, I know we already went over this slide in my class, but I'm reading over the slide again and it says. Um, the racist white lawmakers known as redeemers.
Mm-hmm.
Did they, did they call themselves redeemers or did other people?
No, they they called themselves that. And that was like, that that's like a positive term, you know, like we're redeeming the South. Uh, and so that we get that term.
I just thought that was weird because I don't know, redeemers didn't really sound like a fitting term.
Right, now, like to us nowadays, you know, we look at everything through this lens of like, wow, we cannot believe how racist people were back then. Uh, but that's just the reality of it, yeah. So um, no, that's, that term is not a term that any historian has given them. Or that like I chose to give them or anything like that. That's a term they used, uh, but it's something that you have to know. Because a lot of times on like an AP question, they will just use the word redeemers because it's a historical term. Um, so anyway, um, there is the 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 nice plays that people go to. Where you have to dress up and it's, you know, it's kind of expensive to go. And then there's the cheap place. So like I mentioned this with um with uh Buffalo Bill Cody and he had his Wild West uh show, which was. It it went to these these cheap theaters called vaudeville houses. And in the vaudeville houses, the crowd is rowdy and they're like throwing stuff and they're like yelling out stuff. And and it's it's just this raucous atmosphere in these, and and so people can take more more risks, you know, they can uh. They can do socially risky things uh in in a vaudeville house that they wouldn't do in a nice theater. Where everybody's expected to sit quietly and and watch the play without comment. Um, and uh, so a minstrel show uh had become popular. Uh, and it, of course, was touring in the South, but also in the North as well in vaudeville shows across the country called Jump Jim Crow. And again, um, this is incredibly racist stuff, but we have to talk about it because it is a part of the history. And we you you need to know what what this is all about. So this particular um uh drawing is an advertisement actually for. Um, uh, Jim, the Jim Crow, um, and these, both of these are actually advertisements for this this vaudeville play. Um, anybody know what's going on here? Uh, someone analyze this picture for me and tell me what what's happening there.
Okay.
Um, it, oh, sorry.
Several people who jumped in here, so uh.
So that's.
Go ahead.
That's obviously uh not a African American posing for that picture. It's almost certainly a guy in blackface posing in just uh the like worst way possible.
Yes, that's, that is, that is a white person in blackface. And when you say the worst way possible, what do you mean? What is going on? What is he doing?
He's standing like a duck and not a human. I mean, like, he's.
He's making fun.
Yeah.
Uh, um, Zach, did you wanna jump in and just kind of comment on that real quick?
What?
Um.
Or Ethan, either, but.
Yeah, the still stance he's making right now is trying to make it like a display of that he isn't mentally sound. Like he's he's trying to display that black people aren't as smart as white people. That's what he's saying.
Yes, you are on the right track there. Ethan, did you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I can also see in the entire ish, it basically trying to think that, oh, you can see remnants of it. Trying to be like a fancy uniform and I guess they're implying that he stole it or something like that.
Well, or he.
And.
He's wearing patched up clothes because he's really, really poor.
Yeah, also, it seems that they're trying to portray him as not even as man as a man should be more effeminate.
Well, not not necessarily as much that, but just like a child almost, like, like, um, like they, they're making fun of how black people look. How they walk, how they talk, and audiences were were eating it up. They were roaring with laughter. And and.
Yeah.
So imagine, like, I don't know if anyone's ever been in a situation where, like, there's a whole room of people all laughing at you. You know, kind of thing. Just the 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 humiliation, the just the outright.
I, I far I find the most ridiculous part is just laughing at the fact that they're poor.
Yeah, well, and just, just.
That's kind of ridiculous to me.
Well, yeah, but they they did like, you know, like this, like they they they're like making fun of how they talk, how they look, how they, how they walk and and audiences.
And even I can see later in the slide became more political, like, oh, how sort of like poll taxes and.
Well, we're, we're, okay, so, so this whole atmosphere, this racist atmosphere in the country, which is being fueled. Partly by this 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 vaudeville show, which has become popular, uh, which just shows you that even in the North, racism is alive and well. Um, uh, this basically lends its name, okay? So that, so it it doesn't have necessarily directly to do with the politics. You don't have actors like jumping into, you know, uh, state legislatures. And saying, hey, you should do X, Y, and Z. But people like just take the name of the vaudeville show and they apply it. To what white Southern governments are doing. So this is why we call this era the Jim Crow South. Because that's what Jim, the Jump Jim Crow Show basically is um what gives. It 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 characterizes the the times, so to speak. So um as white redeemers come in, they set up through a series of Jim Crow laws, uh, a system where they're always gonna be in power. Where they'll never lose another election to the other party. Cause remember, the parties run on racial lines. Republicans are the party of black people uh and and the very few whites that support them. And um uh the Democrats are the party of white people in the South. And so the Democrats have set up a system where they will never lose another election. And the way they do it is through a series of um uh. Ways in which they they sup- uh they suppress vote. This is all voter suppression tactics, okay? So um, a lot of these are self-explanatory, but I wanna roll through them because for whatever reason, they love to ask you about these on AP tests. Um, so you gotta know them all. Uh, so a a poll tax, anybody, what what is a poll tax? Uh, and go ahead and use the hand raise function so we don't have people talking over each other. Um, Ethan, go ahead.
Isn't a poll tax basically like a tax to vote?
Yeah, yeah, so like, um, if you uh, why wouldn't most black people be able to pay that tax?
Cause they're poor.
They're, yeah, they're poor sharecropper.
And they probably set up the price, it varies, just to be right above where they can't afford it.
Right, and of course, white people be like, oh, I don't have it right now. It'd be like, oh, pay us later. And then they never would, you know, it's okay, that kind of stuff too. Um, so yeah, it was just a way to keep people who are black from voting. Um, literacy test. Uh, Autumn, go ahead.
You have to be able to read to do things.
Yeah, they're like, oh, hey, we wanna make sure people can read the ballot, so you gotta take this test, you know, to make sure you can read and write. But we were looking at a literacy test, um, uh, an Alabama literacy test from nineteen sixty-five in fourth block. And like the questions on there are absolutely insane, like, you know, it was like, you know, uh. Like government and civics questions that are very difficult. Um, so uh, you know, obviously, it's it's just a way to make it so. Well, you failed the literacy test, guess you can't vote, um, cause you can't read and write. But really, they 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 were set up to fail. Uh, Ethan, go ahead.
Yeah, it seems for those literary tests, like because there's the segregation, that they can just straight up give people different tests. And those things.
Oh, sure. There's all kinds of cheating that goes on with that. And white people always seem to pass for some reason, you know, give them the answers, give them a different.
I'm pretty sure if you like trip gave one of those tests to like an old white person at the time, they couldn't even.
Yeah, we're, we are, we are actually um very short on time, so uh I won't jump over to one right now. But I do encourage you to Google one and just check it out because it is pretty crazy, um, like the the level of the questions. Uh, Faith, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Uh, I was just gonna ask if um, if even after they passed all the uh the tests and jumped through all the the hoops. That were set up for them to obviously get them to not vote, were they still threatened into not voting by the KKK?
Well.
I imagine they would be.
The Klan, you know, considered anybody who had the courage to kind of buck the system and 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 try to vote anyway. As being quote unquote uppity, you know, and um uh they, you you got on the Klan's list by doing that. But but I mean, if a a small number of of African Americans voted, it wasn't gonna change the outcome of the election. Like, as long as the vast majority didn't vote, you're, they're good. But you know, people are like, kind of, they got savvy to it pretty quick. They're like, I don't wanna end up on their list of people that they go after. Um, so um, you know, because uh the Klan, you know, we, that that first visit is very unpleasant. But the second visit is 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 the end, so um, yeah, Ethan, go ahead.
So um, I'm guessing also another tactic by the KKK in the South would basically try and say that. Oh, the African Americans are complacent. They like it the way they are, right? While holding a gun behind their head.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, and then they they made that same argument with slavery. They're like, oh, we're the, we're the, you know, we're actually gonna talk about this on the, on slide coming up. The lost cause of the Confederacy. So I'll actually like hold that. So you're anticipating something. Um, grandfather clause, if your grandfather uh was a slave, you couldn't vote. As which is a clever little kind of legal workaround of the fifteenth amendment, because it says you cannot deny someone the right to vote based on race, color. Or previous condition of servitude, but it doesn't say anything about your grandfather's previous condition of servitude.
Um, okay, that's just ridiculous.
I know, but that's how lawyers think. So like, if you ever get into law, like, that's literally.
Cause your grandfather's a slave?
But they're like, okay, this is what it says, but it doesn't necessarily mean we can't do this, you know, so uh, you know, just if if. For the, I know some of you may end up in law and and if you do, this is.
They event, will they eventually interpret that as also incarceration?
Um, like, what do you mean interpret interpreted as incarceration?
Like grandfather clauses or like those sort of types of things where, oh, specifically a black person, if you've been jailed, you can't vote.
Oh, taking voting rights away from felons, that's a little different. That that that's a little different. And again, states have, there is no federal statement on that. So states have the the ability to kind of make their own decisions when it comes to that sort of thing. But there is a kind of a general consensus among the public that when you commit a crime and are duly convicted. Uh, you know, by a jury of your peers, you do lo- lose certain rights that other people in society enjoy. Law law-abiding citizens enjoy. Um, property requirements obviously is, you know, you have to own property. And since most poor sharecroppers didn't own property, that that eliminated most black voters there.
What happened to that universal male thing from like the seventeen hundreds where it says you didn't have to own property?
Um, well, that, that's for white people, though, that that that, so that only applied to white people. Uh, and then uh the white primary was where they said, well, in the primaries for the parties, which again, prior to parties are private organizations. Not government organizations. So uh the, then they would say, well, only white people can run in the primary. So it would, it would basically be like, well, your choice is between this white candidate or this white candidate. Um, and then um, of course, the last part of the of the Jim Crow laws was the just out and out segregation. Of every facet of society. We're talking separate bathrooms, separate water fountains. Separate schools, separate everything. And so literally, there would be a white town. And there would be like a couple of miles away, there would be a black town. And um, black people who weren't sharecroppers would come to the white town during the day. And would work as maids and um in various, you know, domestic chores and and uh other things. And then by the time night fell, there was a curfew. And the the people who were black, who were working in the white town, had to leave by a certain time at night. And they had to be back in their town. Um, so it was, it was just never ending degradation and humiliation. For uh black people in the South. And it was, it was all fueled by um kind of these whites. Who saw racism as a way to maintain the old Southern way of life. So they they actively fueled it as as kind of their means to power. Um, and so uh, of course, that won't be changed until the nineteen sixties. So as Ethan was referring to earlier, this is where we begin, that one hundred years of almost of um. Of, you know, just horrific uh slavery and I'm sorry, not slavery, but a horrific um kind of racist treatment. Uh, which wa- was almost tantamount to slavery in some ways. Um, and uh, um, again, we just cannot understate. How awful it was. And I, and so as we go through and we will cover the 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 violent episodes. Where where um this just goes to the next level, so to speak. Um, real quick, uh, as we end here, I'm just wanna hit this last slide. Um. Certain individuals who had committed treason uh by rebelling against the country and um fighting a bloody civil war. Against the United States, who were now citizens once again because of Andrew Johnson pardoning them, uh, were now writing books. Uh, most notable among them is the former president of the Confederacy, Jefferson Davis, who wrote um the rise and fall of the Confederate government. In eighteen eighty-one, where he tried to paint the Civil War in a much different light. Uh, he said that the Civil War was all about states' rights. It wasn't about slavery. And actually, um, black people in the in the South liked slavery because white people were the ones who could take care of them. They caricatured black people as these quote Uncle Remuses, who um, they just, they just weren't smart enough. They just couldn't understand, they just couldn't run their own affairs. They needed white people to take care of them. And and white people were like these nice, you know, um, uh, fatherly figures. And of course, we know when we look at the primary sources from slavery, that that is entirely untrue, that is absolutely false. Uh, but the, this is the way he portrayed it. And because white people were in charge in the South and were kind of um, you know, riding this, this new wave. Of of, you know, racism that was kind of uh spreading across the country. Um, that people were receptive to this. And so um, like, still, in some places in the South, they call the Civil War the War of Northern Aggression. Um, you know, where it's really, you know, the the North is the bad guy and the South is the good guy. And the North is coming in and just kind of shoving their way of life down the Southern man's throat, so to speak. And so that is the, that is what is known as the lost cause of the Confederacy. And it becomes a very kind of potent idea. You still still see it in some pockets in the South, um, being very uh, you know, influential. Where people are still kind of pro Confederate in their feelings. Um, and there were um officers from the Confederate Army like um Jubal Early. Uh, who uh wrote articles that supported it as well. And really, um, African Americans were just marginalized. And they had no, the they they had no defense, they had no say in the government, they had no way of like controlling things. And so um, they would try to teach their children that the way to survive was to be more clever than the white man. And to kind of let him um embarrass himself in certain situations. So they created a a series of stories called the Brer Rabbit Stories, which um, I don't know if anybody is like familiar with those, but those have been made into cartoons. And uh, I remember when my son was young, we, he he got into those and we watched them. Um, but um, yeah, it it that that was kind of their way. Of like saying, well, you know, we can still be cleverer than they are and and let them kind of get caught in their own stupidity a lot of times. And 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 so um, uh, the black population, of course, did not see things like the white population did at all. Um, and and definitely saw themselves uh as 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 more um with it in terms of, you know. How human beings should act and treat each other than 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 white people, which I would say is probably very, very accurate. Uh, Kenzie, I saw your hand a second ago, did you?
Well, I was just gonna note that they use the Brer Rabbit comics to like look up to them and know that they can use some tactics. To maybe gain some sort of confidence back.
Right, cause Brer Rabbit would always be in a situation where the other animals always had more power, but he would cleverly manipulate. But he would cleverly manipulate them and and would get what he wanted in the end. You know, like, he would trick them into some, you know, contest with each other or whatever, and and then end up on top, you know? So that was kind of how, um, uh, you know. The the black population dealt with this, was they like, they taught their children these stories and are, and and this became kind of the way they're like, you know. To to a white person's face, they'd be like, you know, yes, sir, and whatever, but behind their back, they'd be like, you know, trying to manipulate things. So they they could get what they wanted. Um, and in a system where they had no power, uh, and they often did. So, um, uh, yeah, that is, that is kind of where things are at in the South. Um, and it's just a very sad, sad chapter in our coun- country's history. But we are out of time for today, so um, I just wanna thank everybody for their attention. Uh, uh, great job uh, in terms of participation. I'll make sure I get these points in the book, um, and I will get together the questions for those of, those people who are wanna watch me. Wanting to watch this on YouTube, alright? So, um. Uh, we'll end today's session. Does anybody have any questions or comments, concerns? Don't forget that we are having the test on um, Tuesday, because it looks like we're all back. Like, the the central office has kind of just made that decision. So unless there's some kind of crazy thing where a whole bunch of teachers are gone and we don't do it. Um, Tuesday is the day of the test, okay? So make sure you're prepared and I will see you then and um, have a great three-day weekend.
Bye, Dr. Johnson.
Bye.
Have a good day.
You too.
Um, Dr. Johnson, you mentioned something about me being able to have my layout meeting with.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Alright, so uh, Faith, if you wanna um, jump off the call, I'm gonna have a meeting with uh, Elizabeth real quick here regarding her, um, her uh. Exhibit board, okay, so.